Historically.
Apparently, yeah.
Yeah, plan the world.
I don't forget what's a hard one.
Yeah, that. It's usually. It's chilly.
Pretty.
Yeah, it's not hard around here for breathing all the time.
Yeah.
Two years, yeah. I'm definitely, definitely. I mean, there's. There, I was going to. As Richard said. I don't know many know about one of those. You know, I said I could support you. No desire to do that until I know what I'm doing.
Thanks for our home.
And I didn't. Make a bigger progress than I already was. That God has. God has the flu and everything.
Yeah, me too. I'll tell you, I don't want it.
You don't hear that?
That's the best thing.
That's some bad stuff.
Oops, sir.
Yeah?
I'm gonna get a fan picture.
I'd try.
Oh, really?
We will now call the seven o'clock county commissioners meeting to order. Call Mr. Johnson for invocation.
Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you again and we thank you for the opportunity to ask your blessing upon this meeting. Father, we ask tonight you'd be with our troops around the world. Father, you'd just protect them. We pray, Father, you'd be with those who've been wounded, that they would heal quickly and return to a normal life. We especially hold up to you, those, Father, who have lost loved ones in the defense of liberty. That, Father, you would go to them and you would bless them and you would encourage them and you would strengthen them. Father, there's, there's nothing that can assuage their anger other than faith in you. And we pray that you would give them that faith. We pray tonight you'd bless these proceedings, that you would give us wisdom, that we may do what is right, that we may do it for the good of the people. Most importantly, we may do it for the glory of your son, the Lord Jesus, for it's in his name we ask it. Amen.
Let us stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Call on Mr. Mashburn for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, there's only one adjustment to the agenda this evening under administrative matters. Would like to add item H, which is a request from the Mount Morn Volunteer Fire Department to release $55,000 from their fund balance to be used to purchase a fire truck.
Okay. Have we had additions or adjustments to the agenda?
No.
If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Appointment before the Bullwood. Ms. Landis?
Mr. Chair, I do not see Tanya here yet and actually I don't. Ben, is Ben, are you gonna present this tonight? I apologize, I thought Tanya was gonna be here.
Good evening. I'm, I'm here tonight to seek a proclamation from the county commissioners proclaiming April the 6th through the 12th as National County Government Week. When I first signed up to be a part of the planning process, I didn't realize at the time that the, the topic for the week was on protecting our children. As I, after I signed up, I started thinking about all the, the services that, that county governments provide to both our children and families and it really started me thinking about the complexity of some of the things that we do. The, the, as I said, the theme of this week is protecting our children and as our planning committee met, we started trying to focus or narrow the focus on some activities for the week and we looked at some core elements of health, safety and environment. The planning committee was involved. We had Ron Smith, Tanya Landis with Facility Services, Catherine Land with the Health Department and myself basically formed this committee. Neither Tanya nor Catherine could be here tonight, but I would certainly like to thank them for all the work that they've done in the preparation for this week. We also, after we started looking at some of the initial plans, we started drawing in other county departments to assist us and some of these folks were gracious in stepping up to the plate to work with us to develop some activities. Rick Eads with the Sheriff's Department, Ken Vaughn with the Cooperative Extension, Solid Waste with Diane Lewis and Mike Kilpatrick, Lynn Deal with Social Services. All the department heads stepped up to assist us with job shadowing. The Fire Marshal Lloyd Ramsey, Emergency Management Paul Webster and the Library Steve Messick. Some of the activities that we came up with the week, we were looking to develop things that would be good for our children, but also some activities that we could draw families into. And on Monday night, on April the 7th, on Monday night, at the Iredal County Library from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, the Iredal County Sheriff's Department is gonna host some educational activities for drug awareness, gang awareness and internet predator awareness. On Tuesday, April the 8th, we wanted to focus again at the Iredal County Library from 6:00 to 8:00 on the environment and we're gonna have programs on recycling and farmland preservation. On Wednesday, for, mostly for parents, we're at, again at the library from 6:00 to 8:00 having activity related to how to choose daycare that would be more specifically for parents and other safety type issues. On Thursday, we tried to do something interesting for some of our older youth. We're actually having a job shadowing day. We elicited help from different departments and we went out to the schools and allowed some of our students in the schools through the guidance department to sign up to be part of job shadowing. What they would do is they would be released from school, come to our different departments and stay in our departments from 10:00 to 12:00 and then they'll be released from the departments and go with the department heads out to the Iredal County DSS building where we're gonna host a pizza lunch. On Friday, we're focusing at the Ecom Center on fire and EMS education. We're gonna do Ecom tours and the, the Smokehouse tour and again, that's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And on Saturday, there will be a health fair at the Signal Hill Mall and also they'll have the Smokehouse set back up at the, the Signal Hill Mall. Again, we've tried to provide some activities for both our young people as well as some educational opportunities and we would like to encourage our citizens to take advantage of these and also we would like to hear from our citizens maybe suggestions for things that they would like to see in the future as far as, as far as programs. I'll be glad to stop and answer any questions or call on Ron to answer any questions or.
Any questions for Mr. Garrison? Garrison, I'll read his proclamation.
Okay.
National County Government Week, April 6th to 12th, 2008. Theme, protecting our children. Whereas counties play an important role in serving and protecting children and their families and whereas Ired County takes seriously its responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare and safety of its residents in sensible and cost-effective ways. And whereas many Ired County services directly touch the lives of children and their families. And whereas it is Ired County's goal to raise public awareness and understanding about the roles and responsibilities of the county for meeting the needs of the community. Whereas Ired County government wishes to provide educational opportunities to specifically deal with child health issues through a community health fair. Whereas Ired County wishes to provide information to citizens relating to child safety issues within the community. And whereas the Ired County Board of Commissioners recognize the value and importance of children and wishes to promote individual responsibility for their protection. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ired County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April 6th to 12th, 2008 as National County Government Week in Ired County. This first day of April, 2008.
Have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this proclamation.
Are there any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Mr. Garrison. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Campbell.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to request a proclamation for April as Public Health Month. As the Health Director, it's often to my attention that the public does not understand a lot of the things that we do at the Health Department and it's our role to help them to learn about these services and through this proclamation, we think that this will help us in this matter. Public health is important in protecting and promoting the public's health. We provide restaurants inspections, septic tank permits, communicable disease follow-up, health screenings, nutrition programs and community education as well as disaster response. And oftentimes the citizens are not aware of all that we do and we wanna encourage the citizens to become knowledgeable of the services that we provide, not only our clinical services, but the protective services that go on behind the scenes. So thank you so much for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any questions regarding? No questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to present the following proclamation for Public Health Month, 2008. Whereas Ired County Commissioners recognize and acknowledge 128 years of public health service to the residents of Iredal County, North Carolina and the immeasurable contribution of these services to the quality of life for the citizens in the county and state. And whereas public health measures to control and eliminate infectious diseases, improve environmental sanitation and promote healthy lifestyle practices that have been the greatest cause of improved health status and increased life expectancy for Iredal County residents. And whereas in Iredal County, a continued focus on prevention has resulted in a 19% decline in the rate of heart disease deaths since 2000, a 29% decline in the rate of stroke deaths since 2000 and a 38% decline in the rate of teen pregnancy among minorities since 2000. And whereas, North Carolina's public health system is a critical component of the state's emergency response capacity, particularly with respect to the threat of terrorist-sponsored attacks on North Carolina. Now therefore, the Iredal County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April, 2008 as Public Health Month in Iredal County and urges all citizens to recognize that public health is working to ensure that all residents of Iredal County are protected from threats such as influenza, foodborne disease and cardiovascular disease. This the first day of April, 2008.
Thank you, Ms. Teice. Have a motion to accept the proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion and, but when I do, I just wanna hope everybody to make this observation about our health depart, about Iredal County's Health Department. You know, we hear a lot about how Medicare is broken and Medicaid is broken. In fact, we've got a, an item on the agenda about what, what we could do or what we might do as it relates to the, the state and, and how the mental health system is broken within the state. It makes me feel good to see Ms. Campbell come up here and, and make this presentation. She leads our Health Department. And our Health Department is a good Health Department. Well-managed, budget under control, providing more and more services every year to the folks who need it. They go about their work professionally and if you, if you have any interact, any interaction with the board, with the Health Department, you know that they are professionals and they, and they conduct themselves so. They've got outstanding department heads and their leadership is evident by how well the department runs. So even though a lot of times we talk about things that government does poorly and in healthcare, I think it would be hard to argue that at many levels, government does it well. At the county level, I can say they do it well and a lot of it has to do to the leadership of, of Ms. Campbell and the staff that she's assembled. So we thank you very much and, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise.
Ms. Campbell, if you would come forward to receive this proclamation.
Mr. Jimmy Gray from Iredal Water and Soil Conservation.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm Jimmy Gray, Iredal Soil and Water Conservation District. With me tonight, many of you have already spoke to our department head, Mr. Jim Summers. We have an outstanding staff at Iredal Soil and Water Conservation. Our basic charge there is to be good stewards of our soil and water resources. So the two items of, that I'm bringing before you tonight, one is an information item that we have been approached by Alexander County and US Geological Survey to conduct a groundwater survey. So we're, this is early on and just for your information that we are looking into this. Number two is sort of a report on the beaver management program that was conducted last, that y'all approved last year and was carried out by the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. Last year, there was trapping conducted on, on 16 sites. There was over 232 man-hours involved. The removal of 69 beavers. The estimated damage was right at $21,000 and the estimate of damage avoided was over $32,000. It was $32,300. So I'm just bringing this as a report that the, we feel like this was a program that is a success, that's available to the citizens of Iredal County. A tremendous savings to an individual if he had to go out and do this on his own and hope that the county would see fit to enter us into the program once again. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to, either myself or Mr. Summers.
Any questions from anyone?
Mr. Mashburn, as it stands right now, we're participating in this.
We are, but it's time to let them know if we wanna do it for the next year. So if the board concurs with a, with going forward with this, then a motion to, to do that would be in order.
Mr. Chairman, I was a little bit skeptical of this program when I first heard it, but I took a field trip with Mr. Summers one time and you a few, just a few beavers can really compromise the integrity of a dam. I saw that when I saw the ground shaking under my feet, so.
Uses their services at our farm and I will tell you, without them, the beavers win. And, and, and yeah, they're cute and, and having a few was not a problem. Having a bunch was a massive problem. And in this program, if we don't have it, there, there just are not good options for folks other than to see a lot of erosion, a lot of erosion and a lot of water damage to things. So I support the motion.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, ayes have it. All right. Now declare the meeting to be in the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I might ask, will you want some answer for us on this water survey, Mr. Gray, or?
This is early on. If, it's more of information. We, we attended a, in Taylorsville last Tuesday informational meeting ourselves, so we're just sort of getting started in this. Of course, the drought and really, a lot of people think we haven't recovered from the 2002 drought and it's, it's really early on. If you, I mean, if y'all wanna sort of give us a vote of support or say, hey, stop, you know, we'll definitely go by that. But we really don't have a tremendous amount of information for you at this time unless Jim have something to add.
What we're planning on doing within the survey is physically going out and touching wells, plotting depth of, depth of water, amount of water, how many people are on that, on that well. USGA, USGS hopes to take these and, and plot them up for Iredal and hopefully we'll be able to show where water yields best as far as, as far as wells go. Right now, we're not seeking, we're not seeking funding. We think we can get funding through the, through the rural, through the rural center. USGS will fund 60 and we'll have to come up with the other, with the other 40, but right now, we seem to think we can handle funding within, within our own means.
Again, Mr. Mashburn, we talked about doing an inventory of available water here six or eight months ago. Is, was this part of what you were thinking about doing is have some effort in conjunction with these?
Actually, this, this came about separate and apart from what we were talking about doing, but was certainly addressed.
You could incorporate that into what you had intended?
And I thought Duke Power was gonna spend $600,000 over a two-year period doing the same thing in the Catawba Basin.
I think Duke Power's gonna be more related to, to surface water, I think, isn't it?
No, no, there's, they were gonna drill wells because they're, what Duke was concerned about was if the, if the water, if the groundwater availability was changing or moving, then they expected more folks who were not being serviced by municipal water systems to go onto those water systems and of course, that takes water out of the, out of the, the lakes that supply hydro power through their dams and that was what their vested interest was. I, I don't know the details because it was about two years ago when they were talking about doing this, but, but it makes sense. If, if lots of folks are thinking about drilling wells, they're pretty expensive. It makes sense that if we can have some common wells that could certainly save you some money and, because they're probably gonna do it anyway. So, just something to think about.
Mr. Gray, you gonna bring us some more information, right? At some point in time?
Yes.
As that is going.
We'll, we'll be reporting to you on this. I just wanted, like I said, it's early on and we wanted to let you be aware that we are working on it and just so you'd know.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to express our desire to, to hear more about it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We now declare the meeting to be in the public hearing. Call on Mr. Lloyd Ramsey.
Mr. Chairman, other commissioners, other county officials.
Mr. Chairman, other commissioners, other county officials, we're talking tonight, our public hearing, we're talking about the expansion of the BNF, Barringer and Falls Town, if you will, commonly referred to as Troutman Fire District, and also the East Alexander Fire District, which is commonly known as Stony Point. Both are represented here tonight. We're asking for this expansion of these districts because as of right now, all the fire districts in Arledell County are five-mile districts. Our idea is to try to, with your approval, expand those districts from five to six miles where we can. Purpose being, it helps the property owners as far as their homeowner's insurance rate, what they pay for homeowner's insurance. There's a lot that goes into this, and we've talked about this before. But if we can go to the six miles, we're doing all that we can. The state will only allow us to go to six-mile districts. That's as far as we can go. And unfortunately, there are going to be some folks in Arledell County that are going to be left out. But there won't be that many anymore that are going to be left out, if we can get these expansions and quite a few more coming in right behind these folks. But I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Ramsey, just to go, when you say "left out," you're talking about left out of the district, but they still will receive fire protection from the closest district to them?
That is right. They will still be protected as far as having fire service response. They will have response, just like everybody else will. But unfortunately, until we build stations and get them into a fire district, there are going to be some folks that are in no man's lands where they're past six miles from everybody's station. We try to get everybody in a five mile if we can. What we can't, we put them in a six. And then, like I said, the folks, unfortunately, there are some, there's not that many anymore. By going to six, you eliminate a bunch of that. But there are some places that are still going to be left out, and are going to be in no man's land.
And their fire insurance premiums will be very high if they're not within the six-mile radius, right?
But once you go past that six, they get very, 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 it gets very expensive. And everything between the five and the six, I need to tell you this, everything between the five and the six gets a rating of nine. And, you know, a nine, well, that doesn't sound too good, but a nine compared to a 10 is a bunch. That's a large savings. So there is, there is quite a savings, even if you just go from a 10 to a nine. And we've talked before about improving fire departments' ratings. That's, hopefully, we can continue to do that to where we get even better, to get everybody on down even further.
Any questions? Mr. Ramsey. Okay, do we have a motion to move these two districts into?
Get public input.
Okay. Do we have, Mr. Ramsey, right now, we don't have anything else. I'll call you back in a few minutes. But have anyone from the audience who would like to speak in regards to this matter? You may do so. Anyone who's opposed of this, or who's in favor of, you may speak at this time. Floor is now open. Okay. No one out there, anything from the board? Questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the service area expansions from five-to-six-mile districts.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Thank you, Ms. Ramsey.
Appreciate y'all's service.
And the rest of you, thank you. Mr. Smear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. We have one rezoning before you tonight. This is a request from De La Casa Landscaping, who is representing Mrs. S.R. Hart. This property is located on Bethesda Road in Statesville. And you probably find this request familiar. This is 2.75 acre piece of property just to the north of a 13-acre piece that was rezoned back in 2007. The rezoning was from RA to HBCUD, and the proposed rezoning now is from RA to HBCD. And this will be our first case under the conditional zoning district language that was recently adopted. We have stuck with the same conditions, just to keep everything consistent from the last request, and I'll go through those for you real quick. The use will be limited to a landscaping operation with associated office, equipment, materials, and storage. Signage will be limited to 36 square feet. The hours of operation will be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. and closed on Sunday. And no retail sales to the general public from this site. And there will be a paved driveway at the road, and it'll have to be at least 36 feet wide to accommodate commercial traffic, trying to preserve the pavement of the existing road as much as possible if any large trucks are coming in and out. As I mentioned, this is for their landscaping and nursery business. A good bit of the property on the southern portion is going to be for trees, and trees will be planted on the site. And if the applicants are going to speak, they can maybe talk a little bit more about that. This particular node was changed when the rezoning took place back in '07, and it was changed to a commercial node. So the 13-acre piece that you see in orange does comply with our land use plan, although the 2.75-acre piece does not. I think it's a minimal change. I think the spirit of the land use plan is being upheld, and I really don't see a problem with changing that. This shows the area that was changed to commercial, and again, just mirrors the request from last year. And here are some pictures of the site. This is a very rural area, if you're familiar with it. Bethesda is not a very heavily-traveled road by any means. And basically, it's made up of a lot of fields and trees in this area. So what is essentially going to be a tree farm with some, with a landscaping business and office to one side would fit in with the land use of the area. Based on that, the staff is recommending approval, and the planning board recommended approval by a vote of 10 to 0. And I will say that in your package, you'll have some information provided by the applicants that go through with a public meeting that was held out on the site, which complies with our new standards, as well as a mandatory site plan and a report of the meeting detailing who was notified and everything that transpired. So I'd be glad to try and answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Ms. Smear? Thank you, Ms. Smear. Have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor or against the request? Okay. If not, or entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion that we grant this request and rezon this property from RA Residential Agriculture to HBCD Highway Business Conditional District.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed likewise. Thank you, Ms. Smear. And now declare the public hearing closed, and we'll move on to administrative matters. Mr. Mashburn.
Mr. Chair, the following items were placed on consent agenda during the agenda briefing. Item A is approval of high-density option on a parcel of land located at 1208 River Highway in Mooresville. Item B is approval of the abandonment of a portion of State Road 2151, Gant Horn Road from the state-maintained system. Item C is approval of a grant proposal for a horticultural demonstration project, which was requested by the Cooperative Extension Service. Item D is approval of Budget Amendment Number 40 to recognize additional funds from the North Carolina Department of Transportation to assist with the purchase of replacement vehicles. Item E is approval of Budget Amendment Number 41 to appropriate one-stop-voting grant proceeds funding for supplies and part-time election day workers. Item F is cancellation of the Tuesday, May 6, 2008 Board of County Commissioners meeting due to the election primary. The May 20 meeting will be held as regularly scheduled. Item G is approval of the March 18, 2008 minutes. Item H is approval of a request from Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department to release $55,000 from fund balance proceeds. Those are the consent agenda items, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Any corrections or additions to consent agenda items? If not, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Appointments to boards and commissions, adult care, home, community, various committees to appointments.
Move to table.
Motion to table. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most in curious. State for Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment? Motion to table. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nurse and home advisory committee, five appointments?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Mary Jane Sutton.
Mary Jane Sutton. Okay. Any additional nominations?
I move we close nominations and appoint Ms. Sutton by acclamation.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Criminal Justice Partnership Program Committee, one appointment?
Move to table.
Motion to table. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Ayes have it. Animal Agreements Committee, one appointment?
Move to table.
Motion to table. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Ayes have it. Unfinished business, anyone? Okay. County managers support it?
Mr. Chair, nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any close session matters?
No, sir.
Okay. Most in order for German.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Most to German. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it.